Good morning, everyone. Today is June 26th in the year 2018. This is the regular meeting of the Taos County Board of Commissioners. We welcome everyone that's here with us today and I hereby call this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Chairman Emmer.
Present.
Vice Chair Gagis.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Gagis.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present. If anyone will please stand, I'll ask Commissioner O'Donnell to introduce Father Daniel Dennis for inspirational devotion and starter meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Father Daniel is from the Guadalupe Parish and he will lead us in prayer today.
Recognizing God's presence in our midst and as far ahead, asking for our needs, I said, "Lord, as we begin our deliberations and conversations today, may they not only be set on pre-categorized agendas or an intent only to accomplish what we have in mind, but as a community to listen, to truly listen, to encounter one another in our needs, in our understanding, and in our goals and desires for this place, many of which I'm sure you have inspired. Help us throughout Taos County to be able to recognize, especially those who are mostly there, those who are on the margins, on the fringes, as it were, who need desperately because of their inability sometimes to take care of themselves, for us to reach out as a community, as we always have, to take care of one another, fill our hearts with that compassion which knows no bounds, by which we are able not only to accomplish what we have set out to do, but so much more." We ask all of this in your name. Amen. Thank you very much.
May I, Father, Commissioner? Father Daniel, would you like to introduce who is with you today?
Yes, I have Joe Magafi, who is a resident of Edgewood, New Mexico, and he is a seminarian. He's studying for the priesthood for our diocese, and so he's been with us for the sun, and so we welcome him. Thank you. Thank you for inviting me.
Please remain standing and Mr. Houdini will be leading this.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioners, can I sign on the agenda's approval of the agenda? Do you approve? I'll second Mr. Chairman. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda of the June 26 regular meeting of Taos County Board of Commissioners. Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagis.
Yes.
Chairman Emmer.
Yes. Item 6, Citizens Concerns. Any citizen in the audience today wishing to address permission regarding anything that's on the agenda or just something that you want to talk to us about, we ask that you come forward and please keep your comments for less than five minutes so we can get the point and then talk to staff about it at a later time. Anyone wishing to address? Mr. Phil Keating. Thanks for being back and thanks for not being heard in your accident and we'll give you a pass on missing a meeting. Next, item item 7 is an award under awards and recognition. Acknowledgement of Taos County receiving a risk awareness program award. Those are the RAP things that we get in our email every week from our risk manager. This award was presented at the New Mexico Counties 33 Strong Conference that a lot of us were just at down in Socorro, and we survived the heat down there, I don't know how, but it was a really good conference. And Commissioner O'Donnell, if you've got this award, so would like to present that on behalf of Taos County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioner. Res viewing audience, during the closing brunch, awards were presented and Taos County did receive a RAP award and it was for 51% reduction in law enforcement claims and 36 reduction in the number of multi-line claims, which is substantial. We continue to see reductions, which means we pay less out in various claims, so I was hoping...
We invite Mr. Tribu to come pick up the word and I do want to thank Mr. Jason Tribu. Well, he's still relatively new to the county, but we never had a risk manager or a safety officer before and it's obviously paying off. It's paying dividends now as we see all of our claims dropping. And I also want to thank all of the individual members of the safety committee. Every department has somebody that represents each department within the safety committee. They meet often and they meet every week to talk about best practices within the office and it's obviously paying off. So I also want to thank the Commissioner for picking up the award on our behalf and I love getting awards for Taos County. It's a great feeling with our peers watching us, knowing that we're working hard and improving things for our jurisdictions.
So the award reads, presented to Taos County for successfully completing eight years in the RAP awareness program and again reducing various claims. So is Mr. Jason coming or...
I don't think you'll be able to make it in right now, so who would just accept that as my behalf. I appreciate you. Keep doing it. And again, it's everybody, I think there's nothing wrong with having a much safer work environment for all of our employees and it takes every one of us to continue to keep that safe working environment there. So thank you to all of our employees for taking your own safety into your own hands and making sure that everything around you is safe as well.
And Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but there was a citizen who came in late. I'm wondering if you would allow her to speak in your citizens forum?
Pleasure, Commissioner.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman. Before that, I wanted to echo what our manager said regards to the award the county received at the New Mexico Association, the county's brunch and the last luncheon that we had. The credit goes to the staff, to our manager, to the employees of the county for, they're the ones that are in trenches on a daily basis and so thank you so much for all that you guys do. It was really an honor to be a part of the award ceremony at the time and to know that the county received this and so thank you to the staff.
And Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned the law enforcement pool, which I'm representative on that. Three years ago, 27% of what was paid out in claims belonging to Taos County, this last year that was completed was 0.9%. Less than 1% of what was paid out in claims was Taos County. That's significant.
That's awesome. You know, Mr. Chairman, every time I see a sheriff's deputy or an ambulance racing through town and they're using what they call the suicide, you know, to get to an accident or something, I say a prayer for them. We really hand it to them. They drive, they're trained, they drive really well and they do as best a job at getting there to save people's lives and so they themselves risk their lives as well. And then there's many other facets of which the county, you know, is always assuming liability sometimes, you know, our road department and everyone else that's putting all the staff, puts their lives in front of danger quite often, more than not, and so we thank them for it. We're doing a good job at staying safe and we're safe as well.
Well said.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to bring back the citizens forum and then the form of a motion?
I would.
I make a motion, you bring back the citizens forum?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion and a second to reopen citizens forum under the guidelines stated. Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagis.
Yes.
Chairman Emmer.
Yes. Okay, so citizens forum now, if you have something, state your name for the record and keep your comments for less than five minutes.
Okay.
Yes.
My name is...
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name is Stephanie Mansanto and my reason for being here is I recently found out there is no noise ordinance on the books for Taos County. There's only one for the town. I don't even know for a fact that that's true, but that's what I was told by the dispatch and the state police, that there is no noise ordinance for Taos County on the books. So I'm here to beg and plead and I'll help if it's even appropriate for me to help to get that happening on the fast track. I live on Tomb Drive, right around the corner from the Taos Mesa Brewery. This weekend, there was all night trance dance party, literally all night, it didn't stop until seven. On Friday night, I went over and talked to a young guy and told him to turn it off or I would call the sheriff. They turned it off for like half an hour and I think they must have realized there was no noise ordinance so that I could call the sheriff all along, but they won't send a car. I didn't know that till the next day when they started the music on. I mean, I was literally located out of bed at the beginning, I mean, my windows shook. It was so off the charts inappropriate. So I called the sheriff, not the sheriff, the state police the next night and they told me that they cannot go out on a noise complaint because there's no law on the books. So I'm here to find out how we can make it happen and how to fast track it because it's, it's, how do you say, it's just... That's all I have to say, thank you.
Mr. Houdini, with your experience with two other counties that you've worked for in the past, have such an argument?
Mr. Chair Commissioners and citizens, they are, there are counties who do. The biggest issue with noise ordinance is finding an objective way to enforce them. And so if it's the conditions will, we could do a little bit of looking around at what the latest and greatest options are. What people used to do is they would literally go out with equipment and measure noise, which is extremely unscientific and it wouldn't hold up in court. So what you have to rely on is some more observational type enforcement from whoever you give the authority to enforce the ordinance to. And that is another one of the problems. A lot of current enforcement officers only work daylight, you know, eight to five type hours and a lot of the noise complaints, they come up at night. So you have to also address that. It's a little bit like we were talking the other day about having the resources available for the county to have an actual enforcement mechanism versus just putting an ordinance on the books, you know. That just gets frustrating if you have an ordinance, but you don't have a good means to enforce it.
Commissioner, pleasure. Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, we discussed it and come up against the types of things that Randy is talking about, the luck to put on an ordinance that we can't really enforce. We've already got several of those, but the owners should have some house rules and if they don't, they should be encouraged to enforce them. So I know those guys and I'll give them a call and see what kind of house rules they have in place and what their plans are for enforcing that.
I'm sorry, Commissioners, that'd be disrespectful, but I'm not going away. I'm gonna get a noise ordinance and the state police will enforce it. They told me they would enforce it on the books and I'm not going away on this.
Make sure we have your contact information so we can come and we have that in ordinances, advertised and stuff and we'd like to hear feedback again on that.
Okay, I have one question. Why is it, because I lived in the town and they enforced a noise ordinance really appropriately and respectfully and perfectly forever the day. Why can't we just take the town ordinance, put a county label on it and have at it? Because the cops always enforce it here, right in town. Why not the county?
The plagiarism of ordinance is one of the reasons we do this, so I'm sure that's something that we'll look at when something is going...
Commissioner, I have had the same calls, especially around graduation time, and I live on West Romeo Road, so there's always a lot of parties at the very end of West Romeo Road, a lot of stuff going on. And I too would like to, you know, get the idea of introducing a noise ordinance at some point or another sooner than the day, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming forward and suggesting that. I would like for our staff to look at other counties, other municipalities that do have noise ordinances. I'm sure most of them do, especially the growing cities, and have something like that introduced and set up a committee, you know, if you can get involved in something like that and push it out.
I'm happy to do some research. I'm happy to do that. You know, I don't mind graduation parties, they're once a year, but if this is setting the tone for all night, I mean, I'm late because I'm sleep deprived. And there are trance dance parties where everybody's doing hallucinogens. Sorry, I'm not into it. I'm not into that whole cultural deal that happens that makes people dance all night until seven in the morning. I'm not into it and I think it's dangerous and I think there's gonna be a wave effect of bad things because that's what I've seen, a wave effect of bad things when this kind of stuff goes unchecked. And I know those guys too and I love them and I love the brewery and I think they've done great in the story, but this is not okay.
Okay.
It's residential.
Commissioners, I just wanted to clarify, if I implied that it's not doable, I didn't mean that. It's just something that you have to do right with proper resources or you'll still keep losing sleep.
Well, I'm gonna go talk to the state police after this. I'm gonna say, if there's an ordinance, an ordinance where you do it, will you go?
And I will take a look at Taos and see if that looks like a good...
The other thing that's going on, just to give you kind of an example to back up what you're saying, we have an issue now with the dryness and everything and fireworks are not, certain fireworks are not legal, but you can still buy them at SPO and you will bring them here. The problem is them bringing them here and it being an illegal act, but where's the enforcement?
I understand.
And so we'll work on this and what we'd like for you to be part of the process. I think we've got the passion that's needed to...
You can give me a list, go do this.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Randy, the owners of the Mesa Brewery.
And we have staff already on something we'll share out. All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Next item is item two, acknowledgement of rodeo four versus advance. We had a champion from this year and as it turns out, Commissioners, we had a champion from last year that Snafu made it to where he didn't get the recognition that he deserved. I would call on, thank you, Father, Mr. Raon Pocheco to come forward and recognize his people and tell us the plan we've got for next year because we're playing in Taos next year also.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. Holy Force civilian, New Mac, this year...
New Mexico County's 33 Strong.
New Mexico County's 33 Strong. They have equipment rodeo, they have equipment rodeo. We had it here last year, back in the third party, not back here, I'm sure you'll remember, walking out there, swaying for a few minutes and coming back in. I had no idea this existed until about five years ago, so Taos County really never participated in it. And we've always been a little theory of getting somebody out there to be mature, but last year and this year we got participants and at this time I'd like to recognize Rick Trivio won the loader, the loader, right?
Front end.
The front end loader competition last year, there was a discrepancy in the scoring. I spoke with our Holy Force civilian, Chairman President, and we cleared it up. It's just a matter of time of getting the civilian up here to recognize Rick to get a award. And Mr. Eric, actually Rick is District Four Foreman, Eric is District Two Foreman. So we have some good operators in the public works. We know they can do it, no more excuses. So I just wanted to come up and, like I said, Eric won the first place in the tackle competition.
That's gotta be the coolest trophy getter. That is...
All the kids won it.
I won the waistband, we had a dump truck down there, that's as cool as that.
What I want to do this coming year, or next year, is get a team together, get some of the guys from the road department, send them out with clothes and bring back a big trophy. It's my plan and stuff like that. Of course, we still have the young team. We'll sack it. Unfortunately, we have to be a whole lot of public works or we can't...
Oh, you gotta be all right.
Is there hope in getting Rick something regarding last year because he won the loader competition?
Yes, like I said, I spoke with the affiliate president and he's gonna fix it. Probably just have to get a hold of him. He's not on schedule, we have to. I believe he's from...
Queen.
Queen County, yeah. So we've got it for him, but it will happen.
We're proud of both of you very much.
Thank you, John. And Rick was in the loader competition.
Chairman, I can't, I just want to thank you too. I mean, it's definitely a point of pride to go to our New Mexico Counties and have the winners. Like, Rick won last year, wasn't acknowledged, but we all knew that he deserved it and earned it. And this year when Eric got the award, it is a huge point of pride, he feels better. And that traveling trophy they're talking about, where for Bermelio County and Santa Fe County this year, we gotta take it further north if you think it means to excite Taos County. Knowing you have the best of the best is only solidified by them competing in this competition and getting the trophies to prove they're the best of the best, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you for representing. All right, under item eight minutes, seeking approval for the June 8, 2018 special meeting minutes. I'll second, Mr. Chairman. Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Speaker.
Vice Chair Gagis.
Yes.
Chairman Emmer.
Yes. Now seeking approval for the June 12, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second, clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Speaker.
Vice Chair Gagis.
Yes.
Chairman Emmer.
Yes. Item C is approval of the June 18, 2018 special meeting minutes. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second, clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagis.
Yes.
Chairman Emmer.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Tim. Item nine, consent agenda. I'll read the consent agenda, if there's an item that a Commissioner wishes to be pulled, we will, in the order that they are pulled, we will settle those before the rest of the agenda continues. Item A is approval of DFA resolution number 29501718 fiscal year resolution requesting to adjust the 2018 fiscal year final budget to accurately adjust revenue per fiscal year and closeout activities. Item B is approval of DFA resolution number 30 for 201718 fiscal year, a resolution requesting to transfer permanent cash from capital fund to other special revenue fund to align accounting internal fund with DFA prescribed LGBMS charter account. Item C is approval of a budget adjustment senior citizen fund 0219-0112, 0113, 0115, and 0116. Item D is approval of budget adjustment recreation fund 0217-1400. Item E is approval of budget adjustment for solid waste operations fund 0202-1610. Item F is approval of budget adjustment enhancing 911 fund 0207-0911. Item G is approval of budget adjustment general operating fund 0101. Item H is approval of budget adjustment finance office fund 0101-1100. Item I is approval of budget adjustment Carson Fire Department Fund 0222-1562. Item J is approval of budget adjustment fire protection fund 0209-1554 and 1551. Item K is out of state travel for Lori Weathers, E 911, to attend crimes against children conference August 13 through 17, 2018, in Dallas, Texas. All costs are paid and pulled by House CAC. Item L is out of state travel, an actual reimbursement for Dominic Martinez from Lori Weathers to attend 2018 summit for spillment, November 11 through 14, 2018, in Salt Lake City, Utah. Item M is approval of amendment one to contract TCC-2017-058 Summit Food Services LLC to provide meal services for detention center. Item N is approval of renewal one and amendment two to contract TCC-2017-058 Summit Food Services LLC, meal services for ADC. Item O is approval of NMDOT maintenance agreement for recreational highway vehicle route signage. Item P is approval of contract TCC-2018-34 for A's construction to remodel the interior of Honda Central Substation. Item Q is approval of giving authority to county manager to sign the final contract, TCC-2018-58, for main society of Taos Inc., doing business as Straight Hearts Animal Shelter. Item R is approval of giving authority to county manager to sign final contract, TCC-2018-44, Chris Quote, the Louis Coordinator. Item S is approval of giving authority to county manager to sign final contract, TCC-2017-88R1, Human Resource Development Association. Item T is approval of giving authority for the chairman to sign final contract, TCC-2018-56, Core Health LLC, and Main Health Services. Item U is approval of purchase of new apparatus for Carson Fire Department, all engines and rescue units to be purchased under HGAC. Item V is approval of purchase new apparatus for Honda Central Fire Department, all engines and rescue units to be purchased also under HGAC. Item W is approval of purchase of new apparatus for Cerro Fire Department, all engines and rescue units to be purchased under HGAC. Item X is approval of purchase of new apparatus for Trespia Fire Department, all engines and rescue units will be purchased under HGAC. Item Y is approval of purchase of new apparatus for Cerro Fire Department, all engines and rescue units will be purchased under HGAC. And finally, item Z, approval of purchase of new plumber for the Penyasco Fire Department, the bulk of money being taken out of fire protection fund, remaining amount will come out of their excise tax money. Commissioners, you have heard the consent agenda is presented today. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to set a motion to approve. I would like to pull out items I and X for further discussion.
I'll second that motion. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item I and X, which Commissioner O'Donnell has questions or comments on. Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagis.
Yes.
Chairman Emmer.
Yes. Item I is approval of budget adjustment for Carson Fire Department, 022-1562. This will be presented by Mr. Martinis of Finance. Good morning.
Good morning. The budget adjustment formally for the Carson is to cover negative income for safety equipment in 142 is a dollar amount.
Okay.
I get the approval to approve.
Thank you. Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item I of consent agenda. Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagis.
Yes.
Chairman Emmer.
Yes. Item X is approval of purchase of new fire apparatus for Trespia Fire Department, all engines and rescue units to be purchased under HGAC price agreement. Mikey's not here.
Just a minute.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, as you see, there's a lot of purchases for the fire districts. We are still trying to utilize the loan money and I believe this is one of those that has been purchased under the loan money for TP. I'll let Chief Corde, well, not Ray, more, but Trespia Fire Department, I believe, was looking for, is it a tender? I'll let him give you details about the equipment.
Sorry, I was just planning... What was pulled? Item X is the TP...
The gas tank?
Yes. Okay, so they have a new tender. Um, the only thing they're lacking right now is a rescue. They have a combination wildland slash rescue truck. And this is actually going to be a quick attack, which will help mount for I so ready. So we're hoping it will drop in the next day and evening. So that's what we're getting for them this time. Okay, thank you. Tender? Uh, each half. Okay. Question?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Second. Motion and a second to approve, uh, to approve item X from the, uh, consent agenda for a purchase of new apparatus for Trispyr Drift Fire Department. Quick call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes. Thank you, commissioners. Item ten is county manager report matters. This is an update to the county commissioner, very excited to help Taos County.
Good morning, commissioners, thank you. First of all, I want to thank the board for agreeing to the special meeting on Thursday. In the early, we forgot to the two ordinance authorization to publish for the ordinances regarding the NCRTE election in November, so that's what the meeting will be about on Thursday. It should be very quick, and, um, I do apologize for not getting it on there today and having to convene everybody, but I do appreciate your openness to it. End of a fiscal year, we're in our last week of the fiscal year, so I know finance is very busy. All of our department heads and electeds are also busy making sure we wrap up all our due steps, so, um, we do ask for patience as well from the board. If you have any reimbursement requests from NAC, get those in SAP, please, so that we can get you a check this week for your last, um, for the last week of the year. Wanted to talk to the board a little bit, oh, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about those who haven't sent in their invoices for lodgers tax. Is that too late for last year's funding or when's the deadline?
So it'll be this week.
This week, okay. What's the drop deadline?
Today. And we have to, um, do a check run prior to the treasurer's office closing out the end of the year, so we're moving our check run up to date to January.
All right, thank you.
And then, um, we do, year-end closeout, this is at the end of this week, so Friday, um, our treasurer's office will be pretty busy as well, and they will be closing early, so I appreciate any consideration of their busy schedule. Uh, moving on, I wanted to talk to the board about PILT. A couple of things, there is a big press conference scheduled for the twenty-ninth of June in Socorro to make an announcement on PILT. I think it's a good news announcement, it's fully funded this year. We're getting, um, we should be able to expect what we received last year, which was about one point seven million dollars, so we're very excited, we're grateful, we're hoping it comes before the end of the fiscal year because the timing issue's a little bit tough to deal with, but the other thing that's been come up on PILT was there was a conference call last week on a class action suit that, um, counties are in, being able to opt into to recover, um, underpayments of PILT over the last few years. And so, um, on the conference call, he gave us a formula to kind of estimate what that underpayment might have been, so, um, quick math, they went ahead and estimated based on their formula that we may have been underpaid about sixty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. So I do think it is worth our while to look at the opportunity of opting in and see. The big question out there at this time, though, is legal fees and how much of that would cut into our, um, underpayment that we should be receiving. Mr. John, you also was on the call, so we did just receive yesterday the legal documents to opt in, and so I do think that is a good move, the hope to come back to the board and give you final, uh, direction on what we hope to do. So that's PILT, it's a good thing, uh, money is coming in, and it does feel like we had bipartisan support within our state to fight for the PILT, and we're grateful for all of our representation for fighting hard for that. It's important to us. Moving on, uh...
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say I attended a ditch fee commissioner's affiliate, one of the attorney's affiliate, where they pointed out all the data you're referring to is on tax and revenues website. So it pulls up all the counties, pulls up the amounts that they would get, the three-year average, and then the legal fees were like point three-three percent or something, but it's all on the tax and rep website. If you want to take a look at, uh, all the counties and what they'll get in extra PILT money.
So moving on, um, we did have our CYFP visit, uh, last Friday to the June Hill Detention Center, and, um, I think it was actually kind of promising. They did acknowledge that with JDC being closed, it does eliminate a lot of the biggest concerns about potentially licensing that facility for residential treatment center. So, um, considering all the hard work that's been done by staff over the last year to get to this point, we are hopeful that we will have the ability to really evaluate how to transition that facility to residential treatment center. Uh, the terms of how we would be a partner in that might change. Uh, the state did acknowledge that we would be better off looking just to license the facility, basically be a landlord and allow another third party to do the credentialing of the programming that they intend to do, so we're not there yet, but it does look promising for the possibility of a short-term stay in that building to provide residential treatment until we can build a new building and have a bigger presence in our community. Um, the visit with the cabinet secretary must have gone a little better than I had felt at the time, but it is a problem with the state. A lot of their most offending youth are being shipped out of state right now at a cost of about six hundred dollars per day. And so their biggest concern about a facility that was really high security is actually a need for CYFP. So as they understood what we were really trying to ask for, they saw an opportunity as well, potentially to use that high-security facility to fill the need that they're not pushing out of our state. So I am hopeful, and I do think that there may be an opportunity to revive the RTC. So, good news, and I'll keep the board informed as to what they tell us might need to be done to get that building licensed. We've all talked about the NMC conference. Um, there is a rebranding, um, effort underway by the association of counties. They have now rebranded themselves to New Mexico, counties thirty-three strong. Uh, they have a new logo, and I think it's, it's going to be a little tough in the beginning, but I do understand the reasoning behind it. It does kind of rejuvenate the spirit of the organization, and I think we are thirty-three strong when we come together. It is important to remember that we're a big state with a lot of diversity, and, um, we all have pretty much same problems, just how we tackle them is different, but so that was interesting. And also, um, I found one of the most interesting discussions, um, on the second day in the draft in the opening, um, we had John Arthur Smith, Senator John Arthur Smith, um, LSC Director David Abbey, and Representative George Dodge talking about Hostel Two. And the discussion that they had on Hostel Two, in my mind, was encouraging because there is a lot of talk about new money, oil and gas is up in our state, and they do expect to be a little flush this year with new money. But what I thought most encouraging was the plan isn't to allocate that new money for new purposes. They're looking at all the damage they did essentially the last few years with the shortfall, and they want to refund the reserves of the general fund, but not just general fund reserves. They're looking at how they could refund the LEPF, um, the fire funds, all the, all the different pockets of money they took to be able to make the state whole. That's what they're hoping to fix with the new money before they allocate this new money and new programs. So I found that very encouraging for us counties. They also seem to very well acknowledge the burden that is put on counties and municipalities when the state has the financial issues they have. And we have helped carry this weight, and I'm grateful for the leadership of our board, but it's true, local governments get stuck with it at the end, and we've done the best that we can to continue to do things well for our taxpayer, and hopefully those leaders in Santa Fe do refund the things that they took from us because it's very important. And what they also want to thank the board for is, is the foresight to allow management to take the PILT out of our general fund. That was a recommendation by Senator Smith that we've already done as a county, and I think it was a great move for our county, and it certainly protects our staff more than anything of any major fluctuations if the federal government should someday decide we don't get our PILT. So thank you for your leadership on that. Personally, in our managers affiliate, we had a lot of discussions about those unfunded mandates that we always talk about, and hearing that there may be new money, we decided to form a small working group of managers to really attack full funding of detention. We, at one time, had about five point seven million in a fund that paid the counties for APPO offenders. That has got cut all the way down to two million, and so I did volunteer to be a member of that small working group to start lobbying our legislature to refund that. We feel it's very important if they know they have new money to start attacking them since now in the interim, so that by the time we get to the legislative session, we are, our voice is heard. So, um, there's basically one from each side of the state. I represent the northern part, uh, I think that's file for Perry-Capleton to the east, uh, who's reasonable from Sierra County down south, and I can't remember who's representing the west, but it's a small working group that I think will make some traction, I hope.
Mr. Chairman, at the manager commission affiliate meeting, uh, we did set a motion to have that item, the DOC reimbursement, uh, high priority, so that didn't forward. And what's, what do we, where do we owe? Do we, we have a running total, what is it now?
I don't know that off the top of my head, I can definitely get that to you because, yes, we do keep a running total. We do send an invoice to DOC monthly, which we've never received payment on, but we make sure to maintain that invoice so that we know what we owe, so I can try and get that number and send it out to the board, but I do appreciate, um, the word and the stuff you spent on over detention, keeping track of that constantly. So, and, you know, five point seven million still isn't enough. We're just, step one is to get funded back at the levels we were originally funded at, but the ultimate goal of managers is to get a dollar for dollar for the expense that we impera, we have in the state. So this is just step one to get back to where we were, we'll keep fighting because this is a huge opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a comment about that presentation with Senator John Arthur Smith and David Abbey, uh, and I guess the state got downgraded again, and, uh, Senator Smith, uh, mentioned that ideally, uh, the state should have twenty percent in reserves, and doing our calculation...
Well, as required, he wants twenty.
He wants twenty, and doing our calculation, we have thirty percent in reserves, so we are doing really well.
Thank you for mentioning that, Commissioner. We now have the ability to do projects with those reserves as well, and so often grants require us to front the money, and having those reserves allows us to be able to keep moving and always have some progress with the counties, so I'm grateful for the leadership of the board to make sure those reserves are there for us as well.
And I think we just need to point out those are for capital, non-recurring items. Can't be used for salaries or various contracts, so...
So, um, my next item, moving on, uh, speaking of detention, uh, we had a request from our detention administrator and admin staff a few months back to, um, look at the opportunity of a safety window for the administration. We do get a lot of public detainees that may have been released, and they're coming back to me to pick up their, their commissary or any outstanding balances, and for the safety of our admin staff, we thought it might really be beneficial to provide a window. And so you may see construction beginning next week, or actually July ninth is when we hope to start construction of a new security window at the detention center. Um, the price is, uh, I want to say about twenty-five thousand, so it came under the amount that the board would authorize, but I wanted the board to be aware that it is an investment we're making for the safety and security of our staff over here, and I think it will also add to the aesthetic appeal of it as well as well.
And Mr. Chairman, just to bring up the inmate art auction, uh, we had the best mural. Unfortunately, uh, the last bid was forty-five dollars, so it is returned and I'll return it to JDC, but it was good to at least showcase that what we, what we did.
It was pretty impressive, I think I did feel like our mural was the most impressive as well. I agree, it was nice to see it there, but people were asking if we were even dead on, I said, we already owned one. We got, we got the original, so... Um, and then our preliminary budget was approved. We received a letter yesterday for BFA, thank you, Ms. Martinez and our finance department for, for that. Not only was it approved, but we were also one of the test counties for the LGBMS, and while I was at the conference, I heard a lot of very positive compliments to Ms. Martinez and our staff for not only taking on that role of being the pilot, but for doing it well and doing it accurately, so thank you for that. And then the last thing I have for today is, um, I do plan to be out of the office from June ninth, twenty-ninth through July fifth, so June twenty-ninth, I have a bit of a procedure, I'm going to get basic, so you won't see these anymore. And then, um, just have a few days off with my family, so...
Happy birthday, Leo.
Oh, thank you, those keep happening. Isaac. Mr. Chairman, any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, the new, uh, the Supreme Court ruled on Thursday with regards to the online sales tax. Um, I'm not sure if the managers affiliate or the commissioner affiliate was apprised of it, but, um, I was just wondering how that will affect Taos County, will that bring in more money, um, or not?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, we did, we did formally talk about it, but informally, yes, we all of the managers did talk about it. I can't tell you that for sure, but it doesn't look like we're going to receive anything specific to each local code. It looks like if anyone will see a benefit, it'll be the state of New Mexico. At this time, I don't know if there's a true mechanism, but that would be my question as well, is how would you even determine who to share that money with? It seems like if we had a internet sales or presence here in our county, like just as example, that was up moved in backdoor, then we would certainly see that GRT coming through from other shelves, but I don't know how they would pinpoint if Commissioner Gagos bought something from Questa and how they would know that he needs to pay Questa's tax, so I would anticipate seeing a major increase for local governments, but the state, they're going to enjoy it. I do imagine the state will enjoy it pretty well.
So do you think that the state legislature, there will be a mechanism then to, uh, hopefully bring it down to the counties? I wonder.
I hope so, Commissioner, and I think this is all part of the bigger discussion of tax reform, and how do you figure things like this out? How do you make the local governments hope when, you know, they are the ones providing that? And it's true, I actually got a call from Santa Fe, New Mexican, with, uh, asking for a comment on this, and I likened it to the sheriff, uh, how do you even know ever that we're getting what's due to us? How do we know that out-of-state contractors are feeling what's fair to the local government that they're working in? So I kind of brought that up, it's not a new question for us, it's a question we've had for many, many years, and so I just kind of let the New Mexican know that there's still too many questions in general on our GRT problem. It's not, it's not fixed, we need to fix that for the benefit of local government because we are the ones that tend to take it, take the short end of it over and over and over, so... I appreciate you bringing that up, and I think it is something that we'll continue to talk about through our managers affiliate. Whatever we can, get our hands on a little bit of what's rightfully ours, we have to fight for it, it feels like so.
I have an article in the USA Today Monday section, in case anybody wants to see it. Also, Mr. Chairman, uh, from the board meeting, from the New Mexico Association of Counties that we had on Thursday, we have a new leadership, uh, that took office on Friday. The, um, president, of course, is now Rebecca Long, she's the county commissioner from E County. The president-elect is Mark Cage from Eddie County, he's a sheriff. The vice president, uh, is Steven Boyle, he's the Otero County assessor, and the, uh, of course, congratulations to our past president, Susan Flores, from Otero County as well. The WIR board representatives, Ernest Tapia from Wildwood County, he's a county commissioner, and Will Cabin, um, Childs County Commissioner. So they'll be representing, um, the Association of Counties. I still call it the Association of Counties.
It's going to be hard. Senator John Arthur Smith, I'll be corrected.
Okay, we need to maybe get some more order in there.
It would be nice, someday. It's moving south.
On that, I was asked if I would consider running as a vice president at the next conference, and, uh, some people would consider it.
As Commissioner O'Donnell pointed out, I think Wildwood County is in third story, but that's still a solid board.
Well, John Guyer broke the mall municipal lease years ago, and so, uh, we'll do that.
The time is to start now, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, there's some people that approached me after the election and asked me like this.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, under item eleven, uh, commissioner reports some matters. Are, is there any new business to be considered at a future commission meeting, commissioners? And moving on, item B, commissioners' announcements, I passed out the, uh, I'm a rep on the work comp pool, and while I was there, I was voted onto the executive board for work comp for the, for the state. This is our, our claims analysis, loss analysis report. If we go, if you want to know what... If we go, if you want to know where our, by department, you go to page three. Anything in red is high frequency severity, and we're typical. They're in adult detention, they're in EMS, and they're in the sheriff's department. And of our claim count through, it's not through the complete end of the year, but we're at 114, and you see our losses associated. And if you want to know what types of losses they are, the categories that they have, you can go to the last page. I just wanted to share this with you so you can see where our staff has been working to reduce these numbers. I think our multiplier went up by 0.9%, which is almost the minimum for, the max is 5%, and the minimal, of course, is 0%, but ours went up 0.9%, which was very respectful. So things as reported earlier in the multi-line and the lot of course pool, I'm seeing the same results in this pool as well. So I'll keep you guys, we have a meeting in a couple of weeks. If I get any more information on our PNC, I'll bring it back to you guys. That's all I have, Commissioners. Commissioner O'Neal.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to share that the land swap of the BLM, State Land Exchange, making the Rio Grande del Norte National Monument whole, because there's a lot of state lands in the monument, that is in jeopardy. And if anyone wants to talk to me about it afterwards, I can share that. But basically, State Land Office and BLM is hesitant to move forward due to the possibility of a newly-elected person in that office who has publicly said they do not support it. What that means for us is we lose additional $87,000 in PILT money. And it's unfortunate. It'd be nice to make the monument whole. And they had a deadline up today, hoping this particular person would agree to move forward because they did not want to spend public money for the appraisals. Because what they have to do is fair equal, fair exchange. When they swap the lands, there has to be natural resources considered. It has to be a fair exchange. And they were going to move forward on those appraisals today, but it's uncertain. It could be dead in the water for now. Just wanted to let the commission know about that.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, moving on, item 12. A is a discussion regarding the Assam Council 18 Taos County Public Employees Local 1193. This matter may be discussed pursuant to open meetings at exemption 10-15-1 H5, which allows discussing bargaining strategy, preliminary collective bargaining negotiations in executive session. Mr. Radio, is it your recommendation that we go into closed session under the exemption 10-15-1 H5 at this time?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, it is my recommendation.
Motion to go ahead.
I'll second Mr. Chairman.
Question and a second. Clerk Calhoun roll.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Press Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett.
Yes. So we're back. Motion, Commissioners, to come back into open session. So. Clerk Calhoun roll.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Press Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett.
Yes. Mr. Radio, would you give a report in what was discussed and under the exemption 10-15-1 H5?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we planned a closed session to discuss labor personnel matters. And that is all that was discussed, and no action was taken, so we met requirements of the open meeting set.
Motion to set, Mr. Radio is reported.
So.
Second. Clerk Calhoun roll.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Press Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, item 13, is adjournment. Move for approval. Move. Adjourn. Second. All of you say aye. Aye, any opposed, same as aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, clerks.